Seventh, two thousand twenty-two, meeting of the Norfolk City Council. To begin, I'll call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Granquist?
Here.
Arnz?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
McCarthy?
Here.
Muren?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Clausen?
Here.
Hildebrand?
Here.
All right, with that, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Would then look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So moved, Your Honor?
Second.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item number twenty-two on the council agenda under Public Hearings and Related Action. We'll open this public hearing at the request of Daniel E. and Connie J. Geary to consider zoning change from I-1 Light Industrial District, C-1 Local Business District, and R-3 Multiple Family Residential District to C-2 Central Business District on properties generally located east of Third Street near Winter Avenue. And to give us some background on this, we'll hear from Val Grimes, our city planner.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering, would you like to open number twenty-four, too? Guess they are connected with each other, that might help each other.
Yes, that's a good idea. So we will also open the hearing at the request of Dan and Connie Geary to consider a mixed-use overlay on properties during the located east of Third Street near Winter Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Val.
So these two requests, the first one is the actual zoning request to go to C-2. It is between the river and Third Street, north of Brash and along Winter. So it is adjacent to already C-2-zoned, which is downtown, where you can have a lot of those mix of uses, which is what they are proposing. And then the second one is the mixed-use overlay district, which we have had on the books for quite a few years, no one's just ever used it before, but this does allow some more flexibility. And this can actually be either a base district where people pretty much write their own zoning district, or the overlay, which is what the Gearys chose to do. Because C-2 zoning, if this passes, provides them most of what they want to do, meaning parking setback uses. The overlay district just allows them more flexibility, particularly to have residential on the first floor, where C-2 has to be second floor and above. And I did bring up one of the maps from the mixed-use overlay districts, kind of showing what this is potentially going to look like and the flow of it. And so their property pretty much contains this whole area right here, and then they have a little area here, some proposed condos, and then essentially the blue is what they're proposing, the red is existing property that they do not own. So that kind of gives you some history, and if you have any questions, I can certainly help you, and the Gearys are here also.
Okay, thank you, Val. Any questions?
Did you say there would be first-level residential?
Yes, there are some condo townhome apartments proposed.
So, Val, beyond the mixed-use overlay, there is also riverfront district overlay that would encompass this area, is that correct?
Yes, this is part of the riverfront overlay district.
Are there many discrepancies between those, between those two overlay districts? I mean, maybe discrepancies isn't the right word, but the mixed-use overlay allows what that isn't currently, wouldn't currently be available to them?
Not currently available in the C-2 zoning that is proposed would mainly be the first-floor residential. Otherwise, C-2 pretty much gets it for them, and so what they've put in the mixed-use overlay, and they do show some proposed elevations of buildings and that sort, it is the same as what they took before the riverfront overlay aesthetics group also.
So this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. If you, if you can both sign in on the form in front of you, that'd be great, thank you.
Dan, I missed your mic button, too, will you make sure it's on?
Oh, turn the mic on, oh, that sounds good. So basically, it's a, it's a development over by the river, and it's east of Third Street, north of Winter Avenue, so in that triangle in there, and with some straggling properties that go down to Brash there, I mean, we're still working on some of that, so anyway. A combination, I mean, it, we sit down and try to decide what we'd like to do, or what we imagine could go in there, so we have some apartments there, there's some commercial along the river. We are thinking of a commercial on the first floor that would go out to a patio, and then on the second floor would be an apartment that would come down and use the same patio by the river during residential hours when the business wasn't there, but it would be a shared area of whatever, and then other condos. So I guess the way it says, "Phase construction of a mixed-use residential commercial development consists of five condominiums, approximately two multifamily apartment buildings consisting of ten units, and approximately five two-story commercial structures of various uses and types."
And can you talk a little bit about this is related to a certain degree to the partnership with Wayne State and student housing, right?
Yes, it is.
This is at least partially designed to accommodate the needs of that student housing?
Yeah, the ones, the ones right there.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
That's where we need the residential on the main level, because those are going to be a two-story townhouse-style unit.
Okay, yeah.
Each one of them.
And just for sake of public record, that's an agreement that's been made between Wayne State and a partnership promoting economic development within Norfolk, in which Wayne State seniors, seniors will live, work, and study during their senior year in downtown Norfolk, starting out, I think, what, twenty-five total next fall?
No, at least have to be done by July of twenty-three.
Okay, yeah, okay, all right. But eventually, as the program goes out, it's up to seventy-five students that will be participating in the program year to year, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But initially, this would cover the first year or so of students?
Yes.
Okay.
First thirty.
And then we, we, the red mark there, we plan on moving the railroad bridge, where that's, that's shown there, and it's shown on the Alson plans that got bid and whatever, so we've looked at those plans, and they all meshed together pretty good, it looks like, so we're working on that.
Which is a big deal in itself, really is. And so that will function as a pedestrian bridge across. Any other questions? I do want to thank you for bringing this forward, I'm excited about the project. Your, your history of investing in the downtown district has made that space better, so we appreciate your willingness to invest and embark on the, the next chapter.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so anyone wish, anyone else wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay, hearing, seeing, seeing no one else, I will ask for a planning commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held public hearings on February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, at the request of Daniel and Connie Geary, to consider a zoning change from I-1 Light Industrial District, C-1 Local Business District, and R-3 Multiple Family Residential District, to C-2 Central Business District, and a mixed-use overlay on properties generally located east of Third Street near Winter Avenue. Planning Commission recommends approval of the requests on seven to zero votes.
Thank you, Brianna. We'll now close the hearing and move to item number twenty-three. I'd look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-six approving a zoning change from I-1, C-1, and R-3 to C-2 on properties generally located east of Third Street near Winter Avenue.
I'd offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-six.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion on this, council? Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-six carries on first reading.
Now I'll make a motion that we go ahead and suspend the rules and pass this ordinance on second and third.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-six carries on second and third.
Takes us to item number twenty-five, I'd look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-seven approving a mixed-use overlay on properties generally located east of Third Street near Winter Avenue.
I'll offer for consideration number fifty-seven sixty-seven.
Motion second, any discussion on this, council? I would just add, echoing what I said before, I think putting, moving these policies forward helped kickstart the redevelopment of that particular area in the downtown district, coming alongside the public improvements that are coming in barely short order in that area, and it's exciting to see. I think it creates new opportunities for economic growth and development in the community, and helps reutilize, reactivate a, a space and area of the community that hasn't seen a lot of activity in the last few years, so I think that's good news in all regards. If no further discussion, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-seven carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'll go ahead, and since this goes along with fifty-seven sixty-six, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules on fifty-seven sixty-seven, pass this on second and third.
Second, then.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-seven carries on second and third.
Item twenty-six, I will open this public hearing to consider submitting an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development in the amount of ninety-three thousand dollars for a Nebraska Affordable Housing Trust Fund contract budget amendment. And to kick off the public hearing and for some background, we'll hear from, is it Andy or?
Mandy Geary.
Okay.
And Andrea Larson.
Nina, representatives of the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District.
Hello, I am Andrea Larson with Northeast Economic Development District. Norfolk has been invited to submit a contract budget amendment request for the Grand Theater Project, and this is due to the cost of construction materials and supply chain issues that have drastically impacted new construction and rental conversion projects that have been funded through the Department of Economic Development because of COVID- nineteen. The Department of Economic Development intends to utilize the remaining twenty-twenty-one Nebraska Area Housing Trust Funds as a source of gap financing for the specified new construction and rental conversion projects that were funded during the twenty-nineteen through twenty-twenty-one program years. This includes Ben Conover's Grand Theater Project. The only eligible costs under consideration for additional funds are construction hard costs. The maximum request for additional Housing Trust Funds is limited to twenty percent of the current awarded Housing Trust Fund hard costs in the executed contract. With that said, the City of Norfolk is invited to apply for ninety-three thousand dollars in additional Housing Trust Funds, and it is important to note that this request is not a guarantee or commitment of funds.
Thank you, Andrea. Questions? So, just to back up a little bit, this, this is a previously approved Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Correct.
Project, right? That is resubmitting, or submitting for a budget amendment given unexpected, unanticipated project cost increases?
Correct.
Accurate?
Yes, yes. Housing Trust Fund recipients can apply for up to twenty percent of their hard costs, just as a way to help offset those unprecedented supply chain costs and whatnot that have been going on.
Andrea, is this retroactive to anyone who may have already participated, or is this for things going forward?
This is, this is for the twenty-nineteen through twenty-twenty-one program years, and the applicants who are eligible have already been notified, because this contract amendment must be submitted by March twenty-third. So everyone who was going to be invited has been.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any further questions? No, it's any, thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, anyone else wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay, seeing, hearing, hearing no one, we'll close the hearing and move to item number twenty-seven. We'd look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty-two-two-seven to approve and submit an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development in the amount of ninety-three thousand dollars for Nebraska Affordable Housing Trust Fund contract budget amendment.
I'll offer for consideration resolution number twenty-two-two, twenty-two-two-seven to approve and submit an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development in the amount of ninety-three thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion, comments on this? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution twenty-two-two-seven is adopted.
Takes us to our regular agenda, and item number twenty-eight, we'd look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-eight to amend section twenty-four-sixty-eight to change accident reporting dollar amounts, and when reporting is required, to match current state statutes.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-eight.
Second.
Motion second, to give us some background on this, Chief Don Miller of the Norfolk Police Division.
Mayor and City Council, this is strictly a housekeeping item. A little while ago, the state statute changed the dollar amount for accident reporting from five hundred to fifteen hundred dollars. They also changed the guidelines where you used to have to report, the motorists had to report the, the accident to the Department of Motor Vehicles, they changed that so that it only has to be reported if law enforcement has not taken a report. And this is amending the ordinance to match the state statute, so it's just a housekeeping item to match.
Okay, thank you, Chief, sounds straightforward. Okay, no questions, all right, thank you, Chief. All right, any discussion on this, council, comments? Hearing none, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section twenty-four-sixty-eight of the official city code to update the requirements related to filing a state accident report and update a state statute reference, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-eight carries on first reading.
Your Honor, since this is a housekeeping item, I'm going to propose we, we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-eight on second and third.
Second, then.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings, if no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-eight carries on second and third.
Item number twenty-nine, I would entertain a motion to consider approval of the bid from Comm Line Sanderson to rebuild the Comm Line belt press number two located at the water pollution control plant for the sum of a hundred ninety-four thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars.
I'll make a motion for consideration.
Motion second, to hear some background on this, we'll hear from Rob Huntley, Water Plant Manager.
Mayor, Council, Norfolk WPC has two belt presses that we run out there, is kind of vital to our operation for pressing biosolids. The belt press that we're looking at rebuilding is thirty-four years old, has not been rebuilt or looked at. We had budgeted this fiscal year in capital for four hundred thousand to look at to either rebuild or to replace. After going out for bids, we chose the lowest bidder for one thousand nine hundred and forty, one hundred thousand nine hundred and forty and forty-nine, four hundred and ninety-three dollars. We have a good working relationship with Comm Line Sanderson, they're the original builder of the, of the equipment, it'd be OEM parts. We look to extend the life of this belt press about twenty-five years, so I would ask for your approval to proceed forward.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Any questions? Appears not. That being the case, any discussion, council? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item thirty, would look for a motion to consider approval to award a contract to BX Civil and Construction Incorporated of Dell Rapids, South Dakota, for the Benjamin Avenue from Thirteenth Street to First Street project, including both, both the base bid and alternate bid for a total amount of thirteen million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand and one hundred and seventy dollars.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion second, and for some background on this, we'll hear from Steve Ramus, our Public Works Director. Steve?
Mayor, Council, on February twenty-second of this year, we opened bids for the Benjamin Avenue Reconstruction Project, that is one mile of four-lane arterial street that will be reconstructed into one mile of five-lane arterial street with center turn lane on the majority of the project. We received three bids, Steve Harris Construction for thirteen million, two hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-six cents. I'm sorry, that was for, that was in our constructions bid, in our construction, thirteen million, two hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventy-six cents. We had a second bid from Steve Harris Construction out of Homer for fourteen million, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and one cent, and we had a third bid from BX Civil, seven, thirteen million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. The project was set up, sorry, what we kind of consider A-plus-B, there was a base bid plus an alternate, and BX Civil is red low between the combined total of the base bid and alternate. The bids were very close between A and R Construction and BX Civil, they were close to the point of about five thousand dollars between, between the open bids. The net result between the A-plus-B bid structure would BX Civil low by about sixty-eight thousand dollars. The, just in visiting with them, they would intend to start this year, the project would be complete in twenty-three. Some preliminary conversation based on the way this bid, project bid in conjunction with the work on First Street, we would anticipate starting on the east end of the project at First Street and working west. We would expect to get through the Riverside intersection this year and get to somewhere around, I'd expect Eleventh, Queen City, that general area, and then finish up the project next year. So with that, I am going to ask Doug Hawley come, come up to the podium just to be available for questions. This project was designed by Schimmer Associates, it was originally established as part of our two thousand and six Master Transportation Plan. Schimmer was involved in preparing that plan for us. Doug has been the project manager through the, throughout the length of the project, and again, he'll be able to answer some questions relative to the project, so I open it up to you for, for questions.
Thank you, Steve. Questions, council?
Well, this is, I guess, in general, either one of you can answer, I guess, if you were involved in interviewing or making the decision on who, but what was the construction timeframe of all three?
This project has a calendar construction date structure to it, it's around six hundred and sixty-nine days, if I recall correctly, which puts it right at the end of December twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, the construction schedule wasn't necessarily part of the bid, it was, it was in the specifications on the timeframe that was required.
Maybe we can bear that out a little bit, Steve mentioned it, but the plan would be for construction in twenty-two to move from east to west on the project, from, from first all the way to Eleventh is the projection, is that correct?
Somewhere past Riverside, we can't, you know, without, without getting deeper into the awarding of contracts.
We're not sure yet, exactly.
Getting deeper into that conversation, but we're, preliminary conversation would indicate that we're going to get somewhere past Riverside, Ninth, maybe into Ninth, Tenth, somewhere around that area.
Those roads won't be completely closed, there'll be head-to-head traffic.
Be head-to-head traffic, head-to-head traffic during construction, yes.
And in the beginning, I know you don't know exactly what day you're going to be able to start, but about how many days do you think this will, this will impact the school?
I mean, the construction is scheduled to go throughout the, the whole construction season, the intent would be to really put as much focus and get as much done while that school is out of session. I think we need to sit down with the contractor, whoever does ultimately get awarded the project, and talk through that. In the specifications, there was indication of working on the part adjacent to the school and YMCA while they were out of session, so focusing on that, so.
As I understand it, the construction folks will have a, they'll have a presence here twenty-four-seven for public input?
That's my understanding, they would have a, the BX would assign a project manager onsite twenty-four-seven.
Great, okay, thank you.
Do we foresee then with that, as we know, you know, communication, public communication, communication with property owners and shareholders, so to speak, along the corridor? To the, prior to embarking on the project, would we anticipate another public meeting, maybe to lay out some of the timelines involved, some of the things that we all need to be mindful of as this project starts? Is that part of the plan?
Yeah, I'll answer, I'll answer some of that here. So, on a project of this nature, the, the scale, the, the fact that it's in an arterial corridor, business corridor, yes, there will be meetings, public meetings to get just general public knowledge that, you know, when we're going to be starting, what phase we're going to be starting, on what that's going to look like. We'll have any information made public relative to detours. As we, as we actually start the project, we'll also be engaging directly with businesses on the corridor so that they know where we are in the phasing, how long each phase is going to be. so that they know where we are in the phasing, how long each phase is going to be closed. We'll work with them on business access. We've also been very apparent in our bid documents about pedestrian access, ADA access through, through construction areas at intersections, specifically Benjamin Avenue. We know we've got a lot of foot traffic in that area headed to the middle school out of some of our residential density areas up there. And so we'll be cognizant of that and working with the contractor. Just some early conversation with them, they've indicated at least bi-weekly construction progress meetings with the design team and the construction management team, as well as the businesses on the corridor. Sometimes as those projects are moving, as the need requires, those meetings could also be weekly.
So as I understand it, this is, this could be the largest single project we've done in Norfolk in many, many, many years, if.
I'd guess next to the levee construction, this is probably the largest single project, yes.
Okay.
Is there any contingencies in there for they go beyond twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, or beyond their construction schedule?
There'd be liquidated damages and they're beyond that schedule.
So just to give a little color to the magnitude of this project, we started discussions, concept and design discussions on this, how long ago? When was, when was your initial contract?
Well, I remember January of nineteen is when we got notice proceed on the project. Now, discussions were even prior to that.
Yeah, yeah. And I know, having been on the council for some time, this project, discussion of this project and corridor reconstruction happening well before that. So I think it's a project that's kind of gotten kicked down the road a bit. But as we can all see, it needs to be done. And the longer that it's delayed, the worse it gets and the more it costs, so. Excited and enthusiastic about getting work initiated. Is there any other discussion or questions, counsel?
I don't know if it's a question, but I think it'd be advantageous to put the concept or design on our webpage or just get as much information out there of exactly what's happening, when it's happening. I think originally we talked going west to east, now it's east to west. But at least having the public have something to look at. Again, I heard randomly about a roundabout in Benjamin. And I don't know why I still have to tell people there is not one, but someplace we can get that information out there.
We'll, we'll work on, as we get this thing started up here, maybe over the next couple of weeks, two, three weeks, depending on when that starts up. But we, you know, we'll talk, we can talk about maybe putting a ribbon on the, on the main webpage as a link into that project to give people direct access to that. I do want to say that, you know, these, we have had just extremely preliminary conversations with BX Civil on this. This project is tied in terms of the sequencing to the First Street project, which we'll talk about next. And there are certainly entities, the YMCA, the school district on that corridor, that are very sensitive to exactly when and where we're going to be starting that. And we will reach out to, to the school district specifically, to the YMCA, and to some of the other businesses there as soon as we know for sure exactly how that's going to be starting and sequencing. But I don't want them reading something necessarily in the paper, thinking that this is it, and they've had no, no contact with us. So again, we will be getting together with them this week and starting to refine that schedule and look at how that's going to be interacting with First Street and then be reaching out to the community.
I'm reminded of the Brosh Avenue project. We had, I think, several video updates, did we not, Mr. Mayor?
We did.
Yeah.
I was in those.
I think you were. You looked taller on film. Don't know if you knew that. But I think that it's reasonable to assume that we would have several more of those and keep the public informed as to, as to what's going on. So look forward to seeing those.
Yeah. Yeah. Again, I think an open house meeting of sorts as we kickstart the project. And I think the idea of a project page on the website is a very good suggestion as well, so.
I just have one question before we, we start. It's that BX Civil is the recommended contractor due to, due to them being the low bid and separating the two contractors of sixty-eight thousand.
That's the primary, primary reason, correct? They were obviously a little bitter by a little bit. Both, all three contractors were very qualified contractors. And I did reach out to Nebraska Department of Transportation as BX is currently working in O'Neill. So I did call their construction PM just to understand their dealings with BX, and it was all very positive. So that also weighed into that recommendation to really back up, back up the low bid.
Okay. And I guess just one, a comment that you had made is that the six hundred and sixty-nine days of schedule is not necessarily, what was, was across the board for every contractor that had bid it?
Correct.
It was that BX Civil could start sooner than our next, our next bid. Is that correct as well?
Yeah, so the second bidder, A and R Construction, did write as part of their bid that they would not be able to finish the work in twenty-twenty-three, and it would extend into twenty-twenty-four. And BX did not indicate any such indication that it would extend past the completion that was specified in the contract documents. And there are liquidated damages, as we discussed, should firms extend. If the work's not done by the specified timeframe, then they would get charged a certain dollar amount per day beyond that, without some approved change order. It's a common practice to liquidate damages, especially on a project of this size.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Doug. All right. If no further discussion, counsel, we ready to vote? Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item thirty-one would look for a motion to consider approval to award a contract for the First Street Bridge and End Stream Improvements Project.
Make the motion.
Motion second. Again, for some background on this, please, Steve.
Mayor, this is the River Park, Johnson Park project that we've been working on as a, as a community now for the past three or four years through design and fundraising here in the community. We did advertise this for bids and receive bids on ten-thirty AM on March third. We received three bids for the project. First bid was A and R Construction. Let me see here. A and R Construction. I'm trying to decide how I'm going to read this. Here we go. I'll read it like this. Low bids ranged from eleven million two hundred twenty thousand thirty-two dollars and ten cents to a high of thirteen million three hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. The low bid, the low bid was from United Contractors at nine million three hundred thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars and seventy-one cents. I'm going to back that up here. I'm going to start over. So this project was bid with both a twenty-two and a twenty-three completion date. And so what I'll read here first is the bids for the twenty-two completion date. Now I'll read the bids for the twenty-three completion date. We received three bids. Each bidder bid a twenty-two completion date and a twenty-three completion date. The bids for twenty-twenty-two completion ranged from eleven million two hundred twenty thousand thirty-two dollars and ten cents to thirteen million three hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars and ninety-four cents. The low bid for twenty-twenty-two, for twenty-twenty-two construction was Dixon Construction out of Iowa. Bids for twenty-twenty-three construction ranged from a low of nine million three hundred thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars and seventy-one cents to a high of twelve million two hundred eighty-seven thousand, thirty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents, with the low bid being received from United Contractors out of Iowa. Reviewing, after review of the bids, the low bid did not change. And so we would be putting up for your consideration the low bid for twenty-twenty-three construction with United Contractors at nine million three hundred thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars and seventy-one cents. One of the things that, that I would just, that I would mention a little is this contract was also set up with concrete or steel girder construction. We had one, one contractor in twenty-two that bid that as steel. Two, the other two contractors for twenty-two construction bid that as concrete. In twenty-twenty-three, all three contractors bid that as concrete girder construction. Primary reason for that is that these are, because we gave them the option of either concrete or steel, concrete spans, concrete girders for this kind of a span run are less. And so it would make sense that you're going to see a concrete girder as the low-cost option. Assuming that this is awarded tonight, we would be in conversation with a, with the low bidder around steel girder construction. They did receive a steel girder bid as part of their bid process or as they were receiving quotes from various suppliers. We would be engaging in a conversation to consider a steel girder. It is at a slightly higher cost, but there's, based on what that cost is or has been shared with us, it would impact that price by about, I'd say about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. We anticipate that there would be conversation with a local supplier to help cover that additional cost and that that would occur at no cost to the city.
Steve, just maybe expand on that. What's the purpose between steel and, and concrete? What would be the purpose to change it to steel for a hundred and some thousand?
You know, we've done a lot of, there's been a massive fundraising campaign on the project. There is a local steel supplier that may have interest in having steel there and might be willing to make up that difference in cost. And so we would certainly be willing to engage that conversation.
I guess I'm looking at, is it longevity, is it? What's the?
When it comes to steel versus concrete, I, and Doug, you're welcome to chime in too, but there's really not a lot of difference in longevity within steel and concrete. What we, what happens is concrete is less, and so you typically see a concrete girder up to a certain span. At some point, it gets much more difficult to span a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty-five feet with concrete. And so you'll switch to steel because you can span it at a less cost. So there's a flipping cost there, or it's cheaper to span with, with steel at that point. So that's why, you know, we saw the concrete here because it's a, I think the span's a hundred feet for this structure. And so you would typically see concrete in that environment.
What about depth-wise? Does that matter? Is that, is that even coming into account on this bridge?
It can. Depth is certainly an issue on this bridge. This is set up as an inverted T concrete girder or an inverted T steel girder bridge. The, due to the, the height constraint that we're, that we're trying to achieve there so we can, we have adequate headroom to get pedestrian traffic underneath First Street. It's a very narrow section for an inverted T. It's kind of a new girder design. There's, there's not a lot of manufacturers out there making this girder. So that, that's another reason that concrete was, again, it was set up as concrete or steel, but typically you'd see concrete come in.
I asked one more, sorry. Would we assume, I hate to assume, but it kind of looks like that's probably where the most of this construction cost is coming in is because of the bridge and the water and crossing it.
The bids, as I understand, and having some conversation with the low bidder, as well as other bidders, that the in-stream work was where they had difficulty getting subcontractors to commit to the work within the timeframe and just generally commit to the work. The bridge actually came in on budget.
And we do have representative from JEO and bid proposer here tonight, if there's further questions.
We took the twenty-twenty-three low bid. Though the other, one of the things going on out there in the industry is, on the concrete girder side, is the, the concrete girders wouldn't be available until November, December of this year. So between, between that and just where the contractors are in terms of their ability to mobilize to the site and start construction, it really pushed the bid, for all practical purposes, into a twenty-twenty-three construction timeframe. Several, well, several, one of the bidders actually said they took their twenty-twenty-three bid and just added three million dollars to it to get their twenty-twenty-two bid. Knowing, you know, knowing that we would not select that, but if we did, we'd be paying an awfully big premium for twenty-two construction. Just in some initial conversations, again, with the low bidder on this, it does look like there is a potential that they, you know, for construction to start late summer, progress, progress within the river itself on the drop structures, starting down at the low, low end at Hy-Vee, working towards First Street. And then somewhere late fall, early winter there, then the First Street Bridge would come out and that work would begin. Construction, completion on this project, it is set up for a July fifteenth reopening of First Street. So the intersection improvements at Brosh and First Street and the bridge would have to be complete by July first, I'm sorry, July fifteenth. And then the project, a hundred percent of the project complete by November first. That's what we call completion date contract. We, about nine, little over a year, I guess. If, if indeed they can start First Street here in August, September, you know, knowing that Benjamin Avenue is going to be going through September and in theory to the end of twenty-twenty-three, you'd have about a year and a half of overlap. I do know BX is here. I wouldn't see, if we can actually get two-thirds of the project done this year, I wouldn't see us taking all of twenty-twenty-three. I don't know. Yeah. Do you have a, I'm sorry, this is BX Civil in the back here. Do you guys have a target date for twenty-twenty-three that you're going to try and hit or not want to commit to that yet?
I wanted to get awarded first.
Okay. So, you know, again, if we get two-thirds of the project done or even anywhere close to there in twenty-twenty-two, without putting words in their mouth, I, you know, I would think we would almost be out of that corridor before school starts.
Steve, I got one, one question and one statement, I guess. So the statement is more of making sure we have this on the website also. No different than the Benjamin, so same, same concept, same everything, timeframes and how that falls off.
And based on the way the bids came out in terms of the twenty-two, twenty-two, late twenty-two, twenty-three construction on First Street, it actually allows us to have this conversation about starting Benjamin Avenue at First Street, working through that corridor prior to shutting down First Street here, you know, late twenty-twenty-two, early twenty-twenty-three. We would be through that corridor, through Riverside intersection, and really be able to free that up. We'd have the box extensions complete so that as the river project is, is going, the box would be complete. And as soon as the river project's done, it would be available for public activity.
Okay, you hit on it a little bit, but that was my question, is that's the reason we're moving east to west on Benjamin, is because this one, we're looking at a '23 construction, and Benjamin would end in a '23 construction.
Yeah, correct. That's correct.
I think it is a good idea, like we talked about with Benjamin, to have a public meeting as we embark on the project, whether some of those in-stream improvements, some of that work starts this summer or not. I think because of the changed timeline from what was anticipated, it'd be a good thing to get out there to the public again, lay out the project, lay out the timelines, get a project page on the website. I think that's all helpful. Again, this is a project like Benjamin that's been talked about for some time, and elements of it go back to 2016. It's also a transformational project, I think, and that'll change the landscape in its area quite significantly. It positions the area for private redevelopment, and as we saw tonight, some of that's already in the works, and makes that waterway, our city's name say, accessible for recreation, and improves the park quite significantly over the long run. So, also excited and enthusiastic about getting this project initiated. Is there any more comments or questions, council, on this?
I think it's important to discuss how this is being funded, because you're talking about 22.6 million in, in, or improvements in our streets in the community. So, when you see that come out in the paper, that can kind of be like, okay, does that mean everything stops, you know, from now on? Do we, how do we do this? And how do we keep moving forward with other projects that we have coming up? So, I don't know.
Steve or Randy here? Which, in, in, in general?
22.6 between the two projects.
Yes. So, the projects did come in over, over what we were budgeting, just a function of increases in price, concrete prices. Benjamin Avenue's primarily a concrete project. Three years, two years ago, we were bidding projects out in the $50 range at square yard. These came in at 70 was the low bid per square yard, then it ranged upwards of around $90 on the, on the high bid per square yard. So, substantially higher, just in that one item than what we were bidding or budgeting on. Big picture, between the two projects, on the city highway allocation funding component, it's an increase of about $300,000, $325,000 annually in our, in what we're going to be bonding for the project. It's a 20-year bond, five years with no interest, and 15 years is, is the interest and principal payment on the bond. I tend, I, I tend to budget pretty conservatively with those, with those funds, just knowing there's, there's potential for, for project overruns or project scope escalation during the design process generally. And so I have capacity within that highway allocation fund to, to, to absorb that $325,000 without any impact to our existing tenure CIP plan. On the water side, on, on the other project side, I had mentioned the river project came in high. We have other fundings available through the, through ARP. Some of those funds would be reallocated towards, towards that project. There are some other funding mechanisms that are in discussion around some of the fundings, funding partners there, SD, the Norfolk Sanitary District is one of those funders, and there's some additional conversation there around funding to balance the project.
The bulk of the budget's coming out of the highway allocation fund?
The bulk of the project for, you know, all of Benjamin Avenue would be coming out of city highway allocation funds.
Right.
And then there's a little bit of, of highway allocation funds between the bridge and the storm sewer improvements on First Street.
Not to keep harping at it, but those funds are generated through, I think that's also important to know.
Those are generated through vehicle sales tax, through gas tax. There's some federal, federal buyout dollars there. So, if we go way back in time, we used to get federal dollars from the Department of Transportation. We might get 10% funding towards a project, and then we would have to apply federal regulations to that project, just to make it easier for us to move projects forward, a little, little better timeline. They buy those dollars from us and give us local dollars so that we can move projects forward. So it's, it's gas tax, it's the federal dollar buyout program, it's vehicle sales tax, a little bit of bridge funds are in there. Last year, that was about 3.8 million.
It's a good point, in general, to talk about, both these projects are, are big dollar projects, large investments, but did not entail tax increase through the First Street project, through a variety of partnerships. And I want to name the local NRD, the chairman is here tonight, from Natural Resources District, who initially helped kickstart that project by the NRD appropriating more than a million dollars for the river work, but through various grants to the state of Nebraska and foundation grants and other things, the First Street River Project was, was committed through budgeting, planning partnerships, not through any special new revenue source through taxes. And Benjamin, since we've had the benefit, benefit of time, planning for that, setting aside highway allocation dollars, which come ultimately from the state of Nebraska via the, the gas tax, we've been able to sock away some of those dollars for that project as well. Any other questions on this last item, council? Okay. And as Brianna reminded me to clarify the agenda item and specify the contract approval, we want to name the contractor, United Contractors, at the low bid of, Steve, remind me what the total was, 9.?
So can I amend? Just amend, an amended motion to approve to who and for what amounts?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we could get an amended motion for somebody to approve, awarding the contract to United for the First Street Bridge and Instream Improvements Project for a total of $9,337,720.71.
Without repeating all that, I'll make the motion for amendment.
Motion second on the amended proposal. Any further discussion on this, council? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay. With that, that concludes this meeting of the Norfolk City Council. We are adjourned.